Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our special session three, the threat of non-state actors responding to CBRN events. I am Giorgio Franceschini from the Peace Research Institute Frankfurt, and I am the current Chair of the EU Nonproliferation Consortium. I have the honour to chair this session, and I would like to introduce briefly our speakers. We will start with Paula Van Inen from the Finnish Institute for Verification of the Chemical Weapon Convention, who will give a presentation on chemical security, chemical terrorism. We hope to have Tom Bielefeld afterwards, who should deliver a presentation on nuclear and radiological security. Here is Tom. And our third speaker is Sarah Shirazyan, who will give a talk about the role of international law in combating CBRN terrorism, especially UN Security Council Resolution 1540, and conclude with Dr Adil Sultan, Director of Research and Analysis of the Strategic Plans Division in Pakistan, who will give us an overview on CBRN security with a special emphasis on nuclear. I should say again that this session will be audio-recorded, so everything which is said will be then available on the web. During the Q and A, I will kindly ask you to speak into a microphone once you have a question and to identify yourself. And without further ado, I will give the floor to Paula Van Inen. And I just announce to all of my speakers that I kindly ask all speakers not to exceed 10 minutes. And if you speak for five minutes, I'd be very happy. So Paula, the floor is yours.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very pleased to the organizers for the invitation. And I will give you some overview how I see about threats over the chemicals and how especially they can be utilized in the CBRN threats and basically how we could prevent that. I'm around the Verifin, which is a national authority defined by the Chemical Weapons Convention, and we are working under the Ministry for Foreign Affairs of Finland. And we are also designated laboratory of the OPCW, and we have a real-time readiness for the chemical weapons-related verification analysis. Therefore, I think that I have some, at least my own opinions to express for you. The Chemical Weapons Convention is mainly thought to be a disarmament convention targeting to destroy the existing stockpiles and preventing of new production of chemical weapons. However, its Article Six provides legal framework and operative mechanism for state parties to control toxic chemicals and their precursors and facilities that produce them. Especially, it is defined that each state party shall adopt the necessary measures to ensure that toxic chemicals and their precursors are only developed, produced, otherwise acquired, retained, transferred, or used within its territory and in any other places under its jurisdiction or control for purposes not prohibited under the Chemical Weapons Convention. This means a very broad application, which goes beyond the requirements of current verification regime to be put in place for all toxic chemicals and their precursors. This means legislative, administrative, and other measures. Therefore, it can be seen that the Chemical Weapons Convention and its Article Six represents a significant contribution of state parties' efforts to prevent chemical terrorism. Then, if we go to the national level, how the prevention of use of toxic chemicals could be realized and how to minimize effects of counterterrorism if it happens? First of all, legislation must be in place. Terrorism must be criminalized. Then, the most important thing, what I see is important, is the district trade of chemicals. Import and export controls should be in place. For example, there might be people who don't agree with me, but Australian group restrictions might be efficient or efficiently utilized. And then, I think that one of the very important things is the end user certificates, that everybody who sells chemicals knows in which way these chemicals are used. And then, there should be improved awareness of risks relating to certain chemicals, like currently used sarin, mustard gas, and chloride. Because it has been shown that these are very easy to acquire and to use, so the national authorities or the nations should start to look for these chemicals. And there are other group of chemicals which would be also to be monitored, other central nervous system simulating chemicals, which can be used like by the non-state actors. So what this means in the practice? So it means that industry and trade must be engaged and make aware about this type of issues. But how to do this, it's a more valuable question. It can be done via national authorities or by industry association. And I would like to hope your opinion is more about this issue. Then, there should be improved monitoring of facilities which produce other toxic chemicals which fall below the threshold of the discrete organic chemicals, which are defined by the Chemical Weapons Convention, and to increase the awareness of these facilities on security and safety issues. In many big European industries, these things are in place, but there are a lot of places on the world which needs more education on these matters. And I would like to ask, should national declaration requirements be more detailed and have lower thresholds in the national level than in the international level? Then, one of the very important thing is to create national strategies for counterterrorism related to the CBRN events. And this means close collaboration with authorities in national level. You should know each other. When something has happened, it's too late to try to do some collaboration. You also need to have resources, human and technology, communication control units, including detectors, equipment, tools for detection domination, and name any other. Then, there should be strategy for include training for first responders, sponsors, and other authorities involved to recover as soon as possible from the CBRN terrorism-related incident. And this is very easy to say and much more complicated to put to the realistic place in each different country with a different type of authorities. Then, I would like to emphasize the need for the laboratory networks for CBRN capacity and capability. And it should be established, and this should be collaborated with other authorities. And I would ask the partner from the designated laboratory, I think that this laboratory should be utilized in this type of incidents. And I would like to hear from you what other types of tools should be monitored. Then, if we go to the European Union strategy. Again, we should have a collaboration within authorities in European Union level, but it should go also to people who are really working in the field, not only in the high level. And then, we should give training, but we should define and think to whom. And then, we should have, again, European Union laboratory network for CBRN capacity and capability. And again, I would promote to use the OPCW designated laboratories for rapid identification of toxic chemicals, but also I would like to emphasize the network for the biological toxins. We don't have a proper laboratory network for this type of events. Then, we should develop test and use of new fast technologies, like in CBRN events, like autonomous unmanned vehicles, which was in the morning talks already thought to be for the bad things, but they can be utilized also to recover from the incidents. And then, of course, we should study new detection technologies and improve countermeasures for victims. I think this is very important even for most of the diplomats. It might sound very far away thinking, but it is in practice what is needed in the field. And then, we need about development and testing of toolboxes for the CBRN events. And already in the European Union level, there are many projects like Aidan, Gift and Toxitriads projects, which are dealing with these issues. And it has shown very clearly that there is a really a need and demand for this type of protocols, and this could be utilized by the international organizations also. And last, I would like to remind that this should be already in place in each state party of the Chemical Weapons Convention and also the strategy in the European Union. But to my opinion, it's not really there. And this national and European Union level policies and strategies need to be confirmed, and thereafter, we need soon practical and trained approaches to this issue. So I think that we should be ready, but we are not. And now, I would hope that how to do this better in the future.
Thank you, Paula Van Inen. You gave us quite some food for thought on how to improve chemical security and what the EU can do to prevent chemical terrorism. We move now to the field of nuclear and radiological terrorism, where we have an expert on my right, Dr Tom Bielefeld, independent consultant from Germany and expert on nuclear radiological security and nuclear radiological terrorism. And let's hear from Tom how his threat assessment is and what the EU and the global community could do to mitigate these threats. Tom, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Giorgio. Good afternoon, everybody. First, I'd like to thank you and the other organizers of the conference for the invitation. I'm very happy to be here. My remarks will focus, like you said, on the letters RNN and CBRN terrorism, and so radiological and nuclear. More specifically, I will restrict myself to... Sorry, I will restrict myself to the... That one?
You don't turn them on and off, the audio guys say.
So I'm using yours? So now I need an extra minute. So I will restrict myself to the threat of weaponized radioactive materials, so-called dirty bombs, and to nuclear reactor sabotage. I will not talk about improvised nuclear devices, not because I think it's irrelevant, but because of, quite the contrary actually, but because of time restraint. So for my remaining nine or so minutes, I'd like to touch on three issues. First one, based on what has happened in the past three years, especially with respect to jihadist groups and especially with respect to so-called Islamic State, IS, what, if anything new, can we say about the evolving threat of radio nuclear terrorism? Secondly, closely related to the first point, but more broadly speaking, it's become quite obvious again, I should say, that there's a problem with radioactive materials and nuclear facilities when these are located in regions affected by armed conflict. And thirdly, there is, or there remains the persistent problem, speaking from a European perspective, with the security of radioactive materials and nuclear facilities in the potential target countries of the attacks themselves, that is, here at home, despite the many very useful efforts to improve nuclear security science in the past decade and after 9/11. So like I said, regulations have certainly improved substantially, but establishing a security culture remains a very difficult problem, especially in industrial and medical facilities in which radioactive materials are used. One issue which has not received the attention it requires, in my opinion, is that of the insider threat. And that's a very difficult problem to tackle. Even more difficult and even less attended to is the problem of the coerced insider. So these are the issues I will briefly talk about. So the first one is the evolving threat. What can we say, if anything new, about jihadist capabilities and intentions? And I base my analysis on publicly accessible information only. So the activities and attacks of IS and others, both in Syria, Iraq, and in Europe in recent years, have sadly provided us with a somewhat better insight into organizational and technical capabilities of this organization and its operatives. Still, there's a lot we don't know, but there is certain tech sevenness in the conventional field and the organizational skills displayed in the context of the Paris attacks and later attacks in Brussels, which appear to be sufficient to organize at least a dirty bomb attack. We have not seen evidence of deeper knowledge in radioactive materials, but what we've seen, for instance, is that there are people joining the organization that have qualifications in chemistry and physics. So these things are documented. So we cannot discount this group as technically or scientifically incompetent to begin with. What we certainly still don't understand very well is the intent, especially of IS and also of other jihadist organizations at this point to attempt such attacks in Europe. There have been several episodes which have been reported in the media over the past three years from the seizure of liquid radioactive waste at Mosul University two years ago, when IS first entered the city, to the so-called Laptop of Doom that was found by journalists in Syria, to various calls by lower-level operatives to, for instance, look at nuclear weapon storage sites elsewhere in Europe and see if there's anything... Calls to other IS operatives and sympathizers and see if there's anything one can do in terms of attack. But none of these data points, if I can call them that, really amounted to convincing evidence of intent from the top of the organization. With the one exception, in my opinion at least, which really got me thinking, and that is the surveillance video found by one of the people involved in the Belgium attacks, the surveillance video of the house of a nuclear official here in Belgium. We can expect that there will be more evidence, perhaps even more public evidence, when Mosul or other places are taken back from IS. And we'll see then what we can say and learn from that. So what makes the whole question of IS intent and generally the whole threat assessment even more puzzling is the fact, or the claim by Australia's Defense Minister last year that IS operatives have already seized in research institutes and hospitals materials which can be used in such attacks. So this is something she said in a public interview. And from an analytical point of view, this is certainly plausible. So this brings me, I'll just keep it here. And this brings me to the second point, namely, what happens generally with vulnerable radioactive materials, nuclear facilities, and zones of armed conflicts. It's not really a new issue, but a pressing one, given that we not only have a situation in Syria and Iraq, but also in Ukraine. And on that Ukraine bit, I found out late last night that there's actually a new paper by this consortium, which precisely looks into this question. I haven't managed to read it fully, but it looks very promising. So I see I'm running out of time. So the last point that I will briefly touch upon is the nuclear security in potential target countries in Europe. Like I said, lots of things have been done and achieved since 2003, but very difficult things remain to be done. And one of them is the very abstract notion, a very important one, of establishing a security culture, which you cannot quite regulate. That's something that we really have to work on, and that's very difficult. The other thing, again referring to IS and jihadist phenomena observed in the past two or three years, is the comparably fast periods of radicalization. We have a study from the German security services, published last year, that basically looked at the biographies of a couple of hundred people that they knew went at some point into Syria in the past two or three years. And of 300-something of those people, they have enough information that they can pinpoint the time from which it was recognizable to the outside world that there was a radicalization going on to the time of actual travel into Syria. And this time was less than a year for roughly half of the 300 people that they called, and for a quarter, it was less than six months. So for security services or other people familiar with potential terrorists to recognize that there is radicalization going on, it's not easy. And this, again, is something that is very difficult in the context of insider threats. So background checks, you know, which have time windows of five years in some countries, bit shorter in other countries, will not catch these radicalization periods. I mean, it's just impossible. So you have to find other ways, and I can discuss that in the Q and A, because I think you're getting nervous. Okay. Okay, let me very quickly then touch upon the coerced insider, which is of course motivated by the video. Of course, we have no idea, at least I have no idea. Some people in this country might have an idea, but they don't tell me sort of what the purpose was of this surveillance video. This is an ongoing investigation, of which there is nothing really in the news. But we know that, not only from other areas of crime, but also from the nuclear field in the early 80s, many people don't quite remember, that things have happened along the lines of capturing people who have access to nuclear facilities, who have access to weapons-related information, and trying to force them to, by threatening the family or something, to force them to provide access to such facilities or to assist in the construction of a nuclear device. Belgium has responded to the terrorist threats in the nuclear field by introducing armed forces at the facilities. Sweden has made a similar move for its nuclear power plant. Spain has fielded a Guardia Civil force at each site, supporting the previously only lightly armed forces that were there. So many facilities, I mean, many facilities in the world do have armed guards at the sites, but not all. And this is an important point, not only for physical protection of these facilities in general, but also to quickly deal with insider threats. So there are still some places which rely on outside police assistance if something happens. And this is, at least in Europe, but hopefully elsewhere, this needs to change quite quickly. And with that, I will close.
Thank you, Tom. What I like about this panel is that it shows how interdisciplinary the challenge of controlling CBRN threats is. Dr Van Inen has a background in chemistry. Tom's is a PhD in physics. And now, our next speaker, Sarah Shirazyan, is just pursuing her PhD in legal studies or in law, or I think you did it already. And so we will see now, after we saw the contributions of chemistry and physics to mitigate CBRN threats, we shift now to the field of international law, especially UN Security Council Resolution 1540, to see what international law can do to reduce CBRN threats globally. Sarah, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the kind introduction. I actually at least just defend my thesis. So the good news is I am finished, which has been a long process, but let's not talk about it today. So back in 2003, with the revelation of nuclear black markets, the world faced the reality that there were potential sources from which terrorists could access what we know they wanted the most, nuclear materials. Unfortunately, for the past years, we have seen that the terrorism is growing like cancer. And as my colleagues, as Tom, has very interestingly described, the violent groups such as ISIS are getting increasingly lethal capabilities. And I don't know if you had a chance to look, but last week, there was a report coming from the Center for Combating Terrorism at the West Point Military Academy, where they basically illustrated how terrorist groups are looking to experiment with drone technology and to deploy drone technology in trying to bring chemical and biological agents. So I urge you to read the report, it's pretty interesting. So as we have discussed in the morning, this kind of issues require multilateral and coordinated approach. And that's why, as you said, I'm going to talk about the role international institutions play in preventing non-state actor proliferation. And my remarks would be mainly focused on UN Security Council Resolution 1540. So for those of you who are not aware with the resolution, it's a Chapter VII resolution, which basically was passed in 2004, and it mandated legally binding obligations on all UN member states. And in particular, what is required is to criminalize domestically the proliferation activities that has to do with WMD. And I'm glad that Paula mentioned about terrorism and how important that is that the countries domestically criminalize these activities. And in more general terms, it required countries to have four types of domestic controls and legislation to combat WMD proliferation activities. The first sort of refers to the physical protection, securing and accountability of the materials, law and border enforcement, including combating illicit brokering. And the fourth type of domestic controls refer to transit, transshipment, and export. And countries were required to submit national implementation reports to the 1540 Committee, identifying what steps they have taken or intend to take to implement the resolution. So as any international institution trying to deal with such a big problem as WMD counterproliferation, especially as regards to non-state actor, they always face some sort of legitimacy challenge. And we have heard today in the morning that we are seeing this kind of divide also with the ban on the Convention for Nuclear Weapons. And the same sort of path has Security Council 1540 experienced. In the beginning, it was a rocky start, and there were issues related to sort of the procedure in which the resolution was introduced, because it was under Chapter VII, not multilateral treaty negotiations. But most interestingly, a number of countries in the global south were not happy with the resolution because they thought this is not something within their national interest. And terrorism, especially CBRN terrorism, was not a priority on their national agenda. So they sort of refused to be involved in implementing, at least in the beginning. And when the 1540 Committee and its group of experts has started their work, I call it, they were very entrepreneurial, and they worked... They did not, the committee did not become a sanctions committee, either in the name of counterproliferation or counterterrorism. And it identified itself as a committee who works collaboratively and on a very... collaboratively. So they are not assessing or sanctioning anyone. And furthermore, the committee and the group of experts have engaged in targeted marketing activities and outreach activities, trying to explain the threat, trying to raise the awareness about the threat. And they also tried to sort of market and introduce the resolution as a way in which poorer countries can tap into the Security Council 1540 assistance mechanism to bridge the divide between development goals and the security goals. These kind of strategies have been successful, in fact. And now, we see 176 countries who have submitted national implementation reports. There has at least 14 country visits, where the committee members visited countries and sat down with the national implementators. There has also been 24 national implementation action plans, where countries basically outline what is their domestic priorities in implementing this resolution. And some countries, for example, South Africa, and some regions, for example Caribbean, have taken local ownership of the resolution and pushed forward the agenda domestically. So even though there is this success stories, I must also say that there has been some challenges, and there is a lot of work to be done. Most particularly, if you look at the reports, the number of the reports, let's say, does not really indicate that the resolution has been implemented universally and doesn't necessarily tell about the preparedness of the countries to... tell about the preparedness of the countries to combat this kind of threats. In fact, if you look at the reports, some of them, some of them might be incomplete. National reports might be complete, but might reveal major gaps in legislative frameworks and/or operational practices. National reports might contain false, inaccurate or outdated information. National reports might focus only on countries' legislative provisions and institutional structures, but fail to provide any information on how states' non-proliferation practices actually work in, controls actually work in practice. Furthermore, national reports may only contain reference to WMD treaty regimes as proof of adherence to the resolution without providing any indication of domestic legal or enforcement measures taken to address non-state actor proliferation. I would like to just give it short and end on a more positive note. I believe that there has been some very good success stories, for example Caribbean region when there was more of a whole of a government approach, where you see a civil society cooperating with the UN and where you see buying of the host country. So it's very important to secure the buying of the host country, especially for those countries who do not have WMD capabilities and who do not understand the threat of transshipment or they can like be just exporting port controls on. So I think it's important to frame the question from what is important in specific country, for example in Caribbean, that evolved around maritime security, about tourism, and frame the issues to build a national interest and also work closely with civil society. UN alone cannot be, cannot do all of the work and especially even with the reports. So it's very important to work with universities and try to push agenda forward. And I'm going to stop here and then we can open it up to the discussion.
Thank you, Sarah. Our last speaker is Air Komodo Adil Sultan, who's the Director of the Arms Control and Disarmament Affairs of the Strategic Plans Division in Ravalpindi, Pakistan. And Dr. Sultan, the floor is yours and then we have our, we will start our discussion.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'm not here in my military capacity, I'm here as an academic. So this rank of Air Commander should not give a false presumption that I'm going to somehow project my military's perspective. So keeping my uniform aside, and I'll try and try to be an academic over there. Thanks to the organizers for inviting me and especially Mark, who has been a good friend for giving me this opportunity, although he just gave me 48 hours to reach to Brussels and speak on this topic. But since it is a topic of my interest, thank you, Mark, for this. Connecting with the discussions that happened in the morning, the interesting smokers analogy. There were talk about dedicated and less dedicated smokers, but there was no talk about the passive smokers who continue to enjoy smoking without spending a penny on the cigarettes. So I'm not, I'm talking about those who enjoy the nuclear umbrella. And once I connected with the CBRN, so this is entire spectrum of drugs. We were only talking about cigarettes in the morning, but CBRN is an entire spectrum of drugs. So is it possible to have a single solution for CBRN threats? Unlikely. But there could be a possible agreement that this remains a national responsibility. The security of WMD-related material and technology remains a national responsibility and you encourage states to take appropriate measures in that. Another important issue that figured out in the morning was about cybersecurity. So I was just referring, first we called it as CBRN, probably now we should call it CCBRN, because cyber should also be included and/or C squared BRN, whatever it is, because the arms control people, they are generally fascinated with the abbreviations. But this is an important area that has to be looked into in the formal. In my presentation, I'll be briefly highlighting the desired elements of national security regime, what each country should have and giving a general overview of what are the international instruments available at this time to deal with the CBRN threats, but primarily focusing on nuclear and radiological threats, because our chemical side has been very extensively covered. So how do we define non-state actors? According to the definition in which my colleague also mentioned about 1540, non-state actors are defined as individual or entity not acting under the lawful authority of any state in conducting activities. So this definition goes beyond the commonly understood concept of non-state actors that focuses on terrorists or as my colleague mentioned about jihadists, but I would reserve, I'll be very careful in categorizing these terrorists as jihadists, because once you talk about jihadists, you are associating terrorists with a specific religion. And I don't think so if this problem is associated to a specific religion. It's a global phenomenon. Terrorists, they don't have a religion. So we should be very, very careful about using these terminologies, because if you want all the countries to participate in the, in the measures, the international measures, then one has to be very careful choosing the terminologies. Because there were incidents happened in Japan, the Saurian attack, biological weapon, or biological or whatever the other incidents that have been reported. So those are not associated, those were not based on, you can say, the religion or something of that sort. So we, I think we should be very careful about this thing. So keeping this into consideration, the efforts required to prevent non-state actors from acquiring WMD-related material or technology should not remain confined only to the physical security aspects, but other elements that can be considered by any state is, this is essentially based on what the IAEA teaches us. The elements of WMD security regime can include legal legislative and legal framework to have, a state should have laws, domestic laws, how to penalize or prosecute the terrorists. Then the state should have regulatory framework to avoid deviation from the standard operating procedures. There should be institutions and organizations for efficient and safe management of work. And I'm sure all the states that have the nuclear capability, they have these kinds of arrangements and there has to be systems and measures also. How to handle these issues or security issues or security challenges. For example, in my country, we developed a nuclear emergency management system, it's very comprehensive and not, that's not unique to Pakistan. Other countries have also developed and such measures are needed for any state that have WMD-related material for any purposes in their country. And last, most important is the international cooperation, because you want to learn from the experiences of others and you should be sharing your own experiences also. And that's how we can develop collective solutions to a common problem. How this problem emerged, post 9/11, there was increased focus on non-state actors with the possibility that these terrorists can enter, can indulge into WMD terrorism and especially focusing on nuclear terrorism. So several initiatives were launched in United States, such as Container Security Initiative, the Proliferation Security Initiative, the Magaport Initiative. These were all kind of informal initiative, they do not have international legality because they're not under international institutions. But these initiatives have helped create greater awareness amongst the international community and that is very useful. Another important initiative is the Global Initiative to Combat Nuclear Terrorism. That's one example of international cooperation. It's a joint initiative by United States and Russia, focusing on nuclear and radiological terrorism or security issues. It has three subgroups. One group deals with the Nuclear Detection Working Group, Nuclear Forensics Working Group and Response and Mitigation Working Group. Since there is no binding obligation upon states to participate in these activities, the voluntary nature of this initiative has been very useful in creating greater awareness and collaboration and cooperation amongst the international partners. So this is one example. The 1540, I'll not go into detail, as my colleague has already talked about that. But there's a fundamental principle in the 1540 Resolution, that security of WMD-related material and technology remains a national responsibility. And therefore, it calls upon all states from refrain, to refrain from providing any support to non-state actors, to strengthen national legal and administrative infrastructure, to develop effective physical protection measures and to develop comprehensive export controls. Since it has already been mentioned, it is under Chapter 7, it's obligatory for all states, all member states, to have these national controls, but it is left to the states at the national level. These responsibilities are to be taken by the states themselves. And there is also provision to offer assistance and states to seek assistance from the 15 Committee report also. Another initiative that was also mentioned in the morning is the Nuclear Security Summit Process. This was very important, because it was a first leadership-level summit in which significant number of countries, having some kind of expertise in WMD-related technology and material, they were called and this helped create awareness at the leadership level, which provided momentum at the bureaucratic level and various organizations and international institutions to take on or be part of the Nuclear Security Summit. So this is one fine example of international cooperation, once you encourage states to engage voluntarily, without bringing any additional obligations. So that was very important. And then whatever was agreed at the Nuclear Security Summit Process, then there was talk about how to carry forward this process. Now IAEA has been identified as the principal stakeholder, which has the expertise to at least implement some of the agenda items from the Nuclear Security Summit related to nuclear and radiological security. But there's a problem with the IAEA. The Nuclear Security Summit agreed to things which dealt with the weapons program, which falls outside the purview of the IAEA mandate, like disarmament. IAEA is not supposed to deal with those issues unless you want to make IAEA controversial. And there was also talk about all material, like the nuclear, military material also. So those are some of the problematic area that we need to take, be very careful, because if you bring out those controversial issues at the IAEA forum, the IAEA is going to be politicized like several other international organizations, then there would be a problem or the reluctance by states to engage constructively with the IAEA. Finally, to conclude, the threat of WMD terrorism cannot be ruled out. However, since there are specific conventions on chemical and biological related issues, so most states have their obligation under CWC and BTWC. And it's upon the states to fulfill their obligation under those conventions. Owing to the associated sensitivities, efforts to minimize the threat of WMD terrorism could bring better results if states are encouraged to improve their national measures, instead of bringing new obligations or additional obligations upon states. There is also a need to avoid duplication and to strengthen existing measures, because there's always tendency to launch new initiatives. And then there is issue of resources, the human resources, the financial resources. Not all states can afford to send their experts to each and every meeting and there is degree of overlap also. I think that's also an issue that we need to bring synergy in the existing initiatives, rather than launching new initiatives. I'll just stop here and I'll be more than happy to share my national experiences also and if you have questions other on this issue, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sultan. We have now 45 minutes for discussion. We have a microphone circulating, I see the first hands going up. Please identify, we start in the first row, then the second row, then Bernd Kubich. And please identify yourself and maybe tell us to whom you direct your question. Thank you.
Sultan, okay. My name is Sotke Egele, I'm from Ismail University of Economics in Turkey. Actually, it's not directly a question, probably something to steer or direct the debate in a certain direction for the round, second round, when the speakers talk about. I've been lucky or unlucky enough to have been involved in a track two activity, which is going on right now, for addressing the problems of non-state actors in the context of especially chemical weapons, but also biological weapons. And one of the challenges we have come across so far, because I've done my part for Turkey in this case, Turkey is a country with fairly advanced export controls and industrial controls and also a member of all possible export control or arms control or disarmament arrangements that are in place right now, and a long history of dealing with the problem. Nonetheless, what we have detected alarmingly, when you are dealing with non-state actors, the mechanisms, the measures geared by the Chemical Weapons Convention, by the Biological Weapons Convention are not prepared to deal with non-state actors. Let me elaborate that a little bit, if you allow me, of course. The main problem seems to be, yes, I mean, the responsibility belongs to the state and the state is trying to deal with the problem, but by the time the state authorities become aware of some kind of a problem, it's too late. I mean, the substances are already missing, they are across the border or they have already reached terrorist organization and we have a smoking gun example in 2013, when an al-Qaeda linked group were able to obtain certain precursors from Turkish small and medium-sized enterprises. And by the time this was discovered, it was not by the mechanisms devised by the Chemical Weapons Convention and all the inspections and other rules that are in practice in Turkey. It was some tip off to the police. The police was able to catch them before they could ship the substances to Turkey, Syria from Turkey. The problem was, you think, okay, at least intelligence work, the police caught them. Very well, well, those guys were taken to the court. Since the special court structure, the judicial procedures, the laws were in there, but the special purpose built courts, the judges, the prosecutors were not in place, so the guys were let free. And by the time the sentence came out, they were all gone into Syria. So from a deterrent point of view, it has failed as well, the system. So what we are faced with here is, when you are dealing with non-state actors, you can forget everything about your existing Chemical Weapons Convention, Biological Weapons Convention or Australia Group arrangements that you may have in your countries, they don't work because they are not tuned to non-state actors. So this is a comment, not a question, sorry.
No, it was a very good comment and I think we have panelists who will comment on that. But I would collect a few statements and questions possibly. The next is the gentleman on the second row, please identify yourself.
Thank you very much and thanks for the panelists for excellent presentations. My name is Ali Rashid. I'm a policy advisor for Interpol's Counterterrorism Director and Assistant Director for CBRNE Terrorism. So I've actually got a few comments rather than questions by panelists, if you could allow me. So starting by the first panelist, Paula, excellent points. I've noted, first of all, you talked about the importance of criminalizing terrorism and it matches exactly our approach. By default, we, the organization is forbidden by its constitution to get involved in any political nature, to take any, it's the neutrality principle pretty much. So, and that's why when we deal with terrorism, we obviously don't get into the dilemma of defining it, but rather dealing with the terrorist act and bring it down to its very criminal bottom line nature. You mentioned the national CT CBRNE strategies and their importance. The good news is actually the organization has been drafting its global counterterrorism strategy. One essential stream is directed towards materials and weapons, as of course a vector for terrorist acts, including CBRNE. There is an incredible focus on information intelligence sharing amongst our member countries. We've been doing a lot of work on that, especially with regard to bomb makers and chemical precursors databases, but also cross-border operations. And that actually leads me to the, to the comment we just heard about deterrence at national lows level. There is an excellent example of Georgia, for example, that have been doing tremendous work in consolidating their national frameworks and in the panel code to actually address, let's say, issues like trafficking in radnuk materials specifically with very, very long-term penalties. So that with regard to the first panelist. Tom talked about IS, capabilities versus intention, obviously classic question. If I understood correctly, you said that the capability, maybe we have indicators, even in the open media, of course, and that's what I'm allowed to talk about here, but the intention was kind of open question in a way, or more puzzling. I tend to disagree based again on facts on the ground. Even if Baghdadi didn't come out and say it's a religious duty like Osama Bin Laden did more than a decade ago, I believe, and it's not only limited on our end side, but all CBRN spectrum, there is very clear indicators that they have way past the intention. The intention is definitely there and they moved towards the action. Chemical-wise, of course, biological attempts, but also radnuk. And that's, and that's backed by facts on the ground, unfortunately. So both now, the new trend is that we actually do have capabilities on the rise and not just the intention, but the intention is in a way checked, unfortunately. Sarah, 1540, excellent presentation and congratulations for the PhD. Sarah, fifteen forty, excellent presentation, and congratulations for the PhD. However, I think the most crucial point right now is the future of the fifteen forty. You made, of course, reference to the reports on a national level. There is the fancy matrix with a lot of reports in it, legislations, but then there is a lot of ongoing discussions right now about where the resolution is going to and what kind of mandate should the resolution take. Some attempts are trying to bring the resolution towards a counterterrorism resolution. Obviously, we work intensively with the committee on that, and there is a clear role for organizations like law enforcement organizations within the inter-agency approach, of course, to be played in a more effective prevention and response, of course. You also mentioned drones. There is a lot of attention now put on drones. It's definitely a trending threat, and it's not going to cease to increase in the future for obvious reasons. They're cheap, they're available, you don't actually have to go on the private black market to access them. However, so far, the indicators, you've mentioned the dissemination as a delivery method. The indicators we're seeing are more focused on reconnaissance and intelligence rather than dissemination due to technical limitations as for now. Those will obviously evolve in the future as well. But so far, and even IS, when they use drones in conflict zones, they're very much focused on reconnaissance so far and intelligence rather than dissemination. Again, that could change, and there was one case in one country, actually, that were used in a way as a dissemination, but technically, there's still a lot of limitations on that. Last point for our last panelist, Dr. Sultan. You mentioned the NSS and the IEA mandate. I definitely agree with you on that point. We believe, our relationship with the IEA, when it gets to nuclear terrorism, prevention and response, is very long. It goes beyond, before the NSS. We have an MOU with them since two thousand five, and we believe very strongly in the complementarity of mandates, so that each organization can be effective within their own mandate and framework. So for example, why the IEA has the ITDB database, and they look at the cases of illicit trafficking from a technical standpoint. We have the Geiger database, which takes the same incidents a step further in conducting criminal investigations and network analysis and the perpetrators that are involved in the same cases. And the action plan that we, that came out for each of the international organizations from the last NSS, obviously emphasized that vision of complementarity between the respective mandates of the four international entities part of the NSS process. Thank you.
Thank you. I will allow a third question by my former colleague Bernd Kubik, if it's not too long.
I'm brief as always. Thank you, Georgia, and thank you, Bill. I was feeling when I entered this room that all the speakers would provide to us, there is the snake, we cannot do everything, and all snakes look alike. But I think if I put your remarks, and I like them very much, into a matrix, I would say there is a big difference between the various technologies from radiological stuff to the nuclear stuff that I think should be differentiated, and you have done accordingly. Secondly, also, this relates to the technological, the accessibility of terrorists to these various technologies. And if I, if I'm not wrong, I got the message that the least, those with the least impact are the most accessible ones, which brings me to the question, and I think you have also this in your, in your presentation, that time matters, there are short-term, midterm, and long-term perspectives. And this again relates to the broad spectrum of measures and countermeasures, ranging from diplomacy, preventive defense versus via coercive to military stuff. So it's not just related, focused to the military. Put it together, I would say, it's, if I understood you correctly and tried to systematize it, I think there is room for diplomacy, there's room for preventive things, and we do not need to look at the snake the way we have done from the Western side, as on the Russian or the Soviet threat. And this, I think, is very important for your work. The last point is, I find, if I got this correctly, that the screws you would like to turn is on the one side on the national level, and on the one side on the coordination level. And I think these two things are two screws, I think, which again deliver, give us some promise for future work on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to give our panelists now the possibility to react, and please bear in mind that I already have four additional people on the list who would like to ask questions. So be brief in your reactions, and we start in reverse order, starting with Dr. Sultan.
I don't have much to say, but I'll just agree with the last comment. Yes, while we continue to state that security of WMD-related material and technology remains a national responsibility, but there is also a need to bring synergy at the international level and the collaboration or cooperation at the international level. Only then you can deal with the threat at the global level. Thank you for those comments.
Sarah?
Thank you. I'm just gonna briefly react to the first comment about the relationship between sort of the domestic, the relationship between sort of the domestic procedures and laws compared to Chemical Weapons Convention. I think there is a little bit of tendency to expect that international law is going to solve all the problems, unless it is internalized and there is domestic procedures in place. I think international law just gives a pretext or sort of like umbrella upon which national, as you said, national responsibility should build on. So if I wanna, I would speculate, so fifteen forty exactly was there to sort of close these gaps between Chemical Weapons Convention and non-state actor, and the question would become to what extent countries have actually really internalized the fifteen forty and the goals of the fifteen forty. In terms of Ali, thank you so much for your very great comments. Of course, there is a lot of discussion on the future of fifteen forty, and if you ask me, I would rather see more resources into the fifteen forty and more possibility to give assessment and technical analysis capacity to the fifteen forty regime. And that's more of a political question and what kind of discussion it would be, what sort of outcome would be the political discussions. In terms of drones, I come from the Silicon Valley, where basically technology defines the future, and we really believe in technology, and I think it's very important, like, to sort of have a dialogue between the regulators, between policymakers, between security analysts and the technology people. Because if you look what's going on in the valley, what kind of technology they're thinking is just technology, and they think it opens up to the space. And I think it's also important to sort of educate the people who are creating this technology, what kind of design features they should have into technology if we're gonna think that this technology might potentially have some security threats.
Thank you, Sarah. Tom, there was a question by the gentleman from Interpol or Remark, who challenged a little bit your assessment on the intention of ISIL to use radiological or nuclear weapons. So what's your take?
I think there was a misunderstanding, actually. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to clear that up. It's also a second one, but, you know, when I'm, as an analyst that does not belong to a government, publicly communicate about risks and threats in radiological and nuclear, I have to be very careful because on the one hand, I communicate with the public via journalists, for instance, and I do not want to be seen as a scaremonger. So I have to be very careful what I base my assessment on. On the other hand, I also communicate with policymakers and practitioners like yourself, and I want to make sure, from my point of view, that the assessment is, that the threat is taken so seriously that there is action, sort of as a result. And communicating between these two audiences is always a bit tricky. So when I'm too careful in a forum like this, I apparently get misunderstood, saying, I have no intention to downplay anything. The, it is, with respect to especially radiological and nuclear, I've analyzed all the publicly available material that I could get, and it is, for this particular group that I was referring to, there are, there are very few clear spoken or expressed indicators in the public realm. Jihadists in general, al-Qaeda after nine eleven and before nine eleven, there are very clear indicators that they were interested in obtaining some sort of a nuclear capability of whatever kind, that they were at least thinking about that and that they were trying to acquire material on the black market. For IS, there is no such intelligence publicly available. And that's why I said, I've been concerned for two years, for more than two years, in terms of capacities, in terms of intentions, the point that really, sort of the focal point for me, when I started saying, yeah, I think there is a clear intention, was this, was this video. And that, that is not even sort of terribly clear, but it is, it's very difficult to find alternative explanations. The other misunderstanding that is actually from Dr. Sultan's side, which I would also like to address, I have a presentation here that I said focuses on what we have learned in the past two or three years from jihadist activities. So if you give me ninety minutes, I can walk you through all the, sorry, I can walk you through all the, all what is known in terms of terror plots in the radiological nuclear field by Aoun Shinrikyo, by right-wing radicals in the US and in Europe and all. So I totally agree that there is, that we have to keep an open mind as to where the threats might come from. Because especially with IS, and that's an interesting point, is when you look at the briefing that, I think Clapper, was it, that gave a couple of months previous, before the fall of Mosul, and in terms of the threats he listed, IS wasn't, wasn't listed, right, in late 2013. So there was, this organization wasn't on the radar. And all of a sudden, it is on the radar. It is also on the radar as a possible CBRN threat. Now, Aoun Shinrikyo was not discovered for a very long time. So we don't know what kind of threats we will face in five years, ten years, twenty years. So all the preventive measures we have to take, we have to take now with a sense of urgency because all of these measures take a lot of time. And we do not know what will happen in five years. Sometimes we don't know what will happen next year, right? So this is one of the things that I try to promote, is this increased sense of urgency. Whatever we talk about, we start, the processes being started during the Nuclear Security Summit, all of them take a lot of time, many years. Security culture to establish it takes a lot of time. And we are now in a situation where we might still have a couple of years, but the threat will be with us for a very long time. And at some point, it might materialize, and then we are better prepared. So that, that's the point.
Thank you. Last but not least, Paula, there were at least two questions directed to you.
Yes, thank you. I start with the first one, that I, I really think that if somebody wants to do something harmful, it will be possible. And there might be people who try to prevent it. But to be an optimistic person, I think that there are tools which we can utilize. For example, Chemical Weapons Convention is defined to be disarmament project, convention, and for the, like massive tons of chemical weapons to be destroyed. And also, all the schedules of chemicals and all the discrete old chemicals, their thresholds are very high because they are meant for the controlling of the chemical weapons for mass destruction. So if you are a terrorist, you fall out of these thresholds. But there are many companies who produce toxic chemicals that they are not controlled. So in each country, we have a possibility, when you have a national authority, that you go beyond these thresholds. And also, there's a possibility that the national authorities or your industrial associations go further and start to think how these chemicals could be misused. Perhaps there is also one other type of legislative matter. Now we can buy anything from internet, and you can just order it, and then you're, it's depending about your export control, how well this type of chemicals can be catched. But, so anyway, in the national level, you can go to the lower threshold levels to check these type of companies if their security things are in place. But the most important thing is awareness raising in academia and industry. Academia is, if I see it from my point of view, I've given training in many countries, also in developing countries, and we have a common problem, not only in developing countries, also in Europe and in laboratories. They are not very keen on keeping records on the chemicals, and so anybody can go there and steal anything and make little harm. But in a bigger scale, it's possible also. And then if we go to the drones, I'm from the university, I'm always on the side of advanced technology. So, but what we can do on this side, we can go for the export controls. And to make also awareness raising, like you stated, that the people who are actually developing and delivering these type of things know a little bit where they will be used. Drones are only one way of spraying things around. There are very old sprayers in every farmhouse and so on. So if you want to do this type of harm, it's totally possible. But what we should go is to control the trade and to make people more aware. And even we are in this type of high-level political audience, I would remind that in every case, the most important thing, how this is going back to the ground, how the people who are working in the ground level know what to do, and they have contacts and information on correct issues. Like, I think it was raised today very clearly, that people are not aware about anymore about this type of threats nowadays. It was thirty years ago when people were afraid of nuclear weapons and so on, but they are not really thinking about this at the moment. But some awareness should be raised without making people too much afraid.
Thank you, Paula. We have about twenty minutes to go. I have already six people on the list. I would now propose to do the following, that I would call on each of you, but kindly ask you to be brief, to ask one question, and I kindly ask the panelists to take notes so that we have then a final panel, a final round, where you can address these questions. And the first one on my list is Jean-Pascal Zanders.
Thank you very.
Yes, good.
Thank you very much to all panelists. I have a question specifically for Ms. Shirazian, and thank you for your presentation, your overview of fifteen forty. One question that always intrigues me is, which takes precedence over the other, fifteen forty or formal treaties such as the Chemical and the Biological Weapons Convention? The reason why I ask that question is, in both conventions, but particularly the BTWC, whose review conference starts on Monday, there is a big challenge of developments in science, technology, and creating new sets of circumstances. In your mind, how can fifty forty keep up with those changing circumstances to maintain the relevancy it has today? Thank you.
Thank you, Jean-Pascal, for a very focused question. The next one on my list is Kyle Kman.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for your, for your presentations. My question sort of evolved over the responses. Mostly it's been answered by Tom's response just now, by introducing complexity, because this was something I was really missing, the complexity in this discussion. When we talk about this, and I'm a little bit surprised, we had the title, "The Threat of Non-State Actors." It's, you know, as we, as Tom just mentioned, it's not just about Islamic terrorism, it's not just about this and that. It is an amorphous threat. It's something that is quite uncertain where it comes from. So it's really in the second part of the title, it's in the response to CBRN events. So already assuming that something might happen. So it's about vulnerability in society, and what I've heard over and over again was, these things are national prerogative, plans and all sorts of stuff. Yes, they are, of course they are. But what about international collaboration, assistance, vaccine sharing, and all these sort of things? If the panel could mention something about that, that'd be, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Kyle. The next one on my list is Dimitri Iliopoulos here in the first row.
Thank you, Georgia. I'm the EU representative to the OPISW in the Hague. I'll focus, obviously, on the chemical threats. Actually, I'm very pleased with the discussion here, which I would encourage to be reproduced in the sub-working group on non-state, on the role of non-state actors, which is in the sub-working group on non-state, on the role of non-state actors, which is taking place in the OPCW, which will be enriching. So if you have the possibility to propose yourselves to participate there, I, I can definitely make a recommendation to the technical secretariat. No, I'll tell you where we stand as the EU, especially in view of the Russian initiative, which has very recently been presented in Geneva for a standalone international convention against chemical and biological terrorism, which is not irrelevant, on, on the contrary, it's very topical, but there is a debate whether this should be tackled in Geneva or elsewhere. I think we rather, we are closer to the position maintained by the OPCW itself, that the CWC has all the ingredients, let's say, to tackle the NSA threat, especially vis-à-vis chemical threats. And from our point of view, for instance, and it was mentioned, and of course, I, I stand by that, that the Article VII, which talks about the national implementation of the convention, is key in tackling this, because then you have a whole, not only the legislation, but also the mechanisms developed in the state parties, the convention, which will allow them, you know, to, to, to make face to these challenges. The problem, of course, is that Article 7 has not been implemented by all state parties, there are 47 that they don't even have in place, put in place, national legislation. And actually, as EU, we are spending some significant contributions in tackling this by offering to the OPCW the possibility to train them. So this is, this is key. And of course, I'll take also the point made by Dr. Sultan, that international cooperation is, is very important to this respect, because then you have all these problems of Twittership and help and assistance, and of course, this is crucial. 1540 is also key, and this is also mentioned in our position vis-à-vis, and we, which we are going also to, to state at the state party, the Conference of State Parties in December. Bottom line, national implementation, international cooperation, prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. The next one is the lady in the last row. Please identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Veronica Stromschikova. I'm Director of the Office of Strategy and Policy of the OPCW in The Hague. So it's good that I follow after Dimitri's, and I readily take up his suggestion that we bring over at least some of the speakers who would be willing to speak at our sub-working group on non-state actors, which we have actually established, and where we have discussions going very much in the similar direction. So ready to do that. But I asked for the floor, because I was very interested in what Mr. Bielefeld actually spoke of, and that's the security culture. I think that goes, the, the thing that you pointed to, sir, is that that's something you don't establish through adopting a law or issuing government decree. It's something that you need to foster over the years. That's a concern that we have as well at the OPCW, and if you could elaborate more perhaps of what would be your thoughts on how best to do that, because it's a, it's a challenging issue, I, I believe. And whilst I have a floor, I would still like to also thank Mrs. Van Inen of, for pointing out the importance of actually the national authorities of the Chemical Weapons Convention interacting with the wider CBRN authorities and community, which is not always the case, and that also creates gaps at national level. And that I could have also reacted to, to the remark that CWC nor BWC are not really working properly. But then, I think Mr. Sultan and other speakers already responded that even the most perfect international instrument will not do the trick if you have slips in national implementation, and for example, in criminal prosecution procedures. That, that can always happen, of course, and, and I trust quite firmly that it is something for, for national level to, to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next one on my list is Richard Guthrie, who sits over there. Please be brief, Richard, as usual.
Okay, I'll very quickly, this reminds me very much of the briefings that were given when the Labour Party came into power in 1997 in the UK. Because one of the first briefings on home affairs given was that as the economy is increasing, there is going to be a rise in crime, because there are going to be more things to steal. And one of the participants, who the incoming minister said, "Ah, but what happens if our economic forecasting is incorrect and the economy goes down?" They said, the answer from the officials was, "Well, of course, more people feel economically deprived, so crime will go up, because people will be stealing things." So essentially, in all cases, crime was going to go up. In reality, three years later, crime is going down. I think we need to go back and double-check to ourselves that we're not reflecting our own fears here. The use of things like poisons, disease, have a very innate fear. And there is this difficulty, we can project those fears, and we can actually encourage those activities inadvertently by constantly saying, "These things are incredibly dangerous, and they, these are what really scares us." So there are people out there who are thinking, "Oh, we want to scare these people, oh, that's how we scare them." And I think this is incre, you know, we've got to be a, a little bit careful about how we describe this. I'm just also fascinated by the return of Bin Laden's suggestion of weapons of mass destruction as religious duty. CIA used to like introducing their reports on that. I used to be a great letter writer. I wrote to the CIA saying, "Very interesting, you've made this proclamation, you say, Bin Laden made this proclamation, that acquiring weapons of mass destruction is a religious duty. Can you send me a copy? Because I can't find it." To which they sent me an answer saying, "We don't reveal our sources." To which I said to them, "Well, it's a proclamation. It can't be, it can't be a secret statement." They gave no response, but they've never used it again. It is a very interesting, very carefully, one has to look at these things. That's a very straightforward, open source, and if it's then misinterpreted regularly, we then have to be very careful about what the rest of the information is that we have to interpret. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. The last one on my list is the lady here in the second row, and then I would like to give the panelists occasion to react. No, but first, it's your turn, yes?
Thank you very much. I think Adil Sultan has very.
Please identify yourself.
I'm Dr. Ismael Abasi. I teach at the National Defense University, Islamabad. I think Mr. Sultan has very rightly pointed out as to how Resolution 1540 and Nuclear Security Summit absolutely were significant forums that actually introduced international norms and national security culture and mechanisms. But as we understand that the threat is rapidly evolving, and so we have to also focus on the mechanisms at national and international level, we have to evolve accordingly, and we have to fully be vigilant in this regard. But I think I really picked up his point in regard to cybersecurity and thereby actually integrating and including of the similar perspective in this regard. As we know that in the futuristic environment, more and more states, particularly in the developing countries, and particularly developing countries, and in the Asia-Pacific region and in the Asian continent, more and more states aspire to install and institute power plants and want to actually add more plants in their national grid. So in that context, of course, we have to then look into two particular perspectives and aspects. Number one, as to how we can actually initiate new plants and facilities that has the capacity, build-in capacity to, you know, address such kind of emerging threats, such as cyber, cyber threats, and also along with this, you know, whatever we are discussing, CBRN. And in relation to that, I think as Adil Sultan pointed out, that actually, whatever was the outcome of NSS can be given to the IEA, but I was pretty concerned about this, because IEA is heavily overloaded. Are we really in a position to give more burden to the IEA? Or the burden should be shared at the national level by the states? That is actually a major concern. I would like to take your response on this.
Thank you. If there are, were two people in the first row who asked for the floor, if you gave a very quick answer, then I would ask first the lady, and then the gentleman close to her, for a quick question.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, it's, it's not a question, it's just a comment. I, I have been working on this subject for some time, and I believe that when we are dealing with the subject of CBRN threat, particularly nuclear threat, one has to make the distinction between becoming an alarmist, or for that matter, creative alarmist, and stating the threat, you know, as it is. So the gentleman out there, he pointed out, when he asked for the source, the source was not presented to him. So these, you know, like these kind of aspects need to be taken into consideration. The second aspect is about the concept, about the use of the word jihadist. When we are using the word jihadist, I understand there's a religious angle to it, but it is just not the religious angle. If we want to respond to the threat of non-state actors, one way of neutralizing this threat would be to stop using the word jihadist, because these non-state actors are actually trying to justify their actions by saying that they are doing this in the name of God, and this is called jihad. The whole word, the whole concept of jihad is actually a very different concept. So if we are using the term jihadist in the context of these non-state actors who are nothing but terrorists, terrorist is a terrorist, I mean, there is nothing jihad or jihadist about them. So if you're using this word, if you're conferring this word of jihadist, according this word of jihadist to them, we are in some sense making them successful in, in their, in their activity of imposing a very, very big cost, because that is the, that is the very rationale of terrorism, that you want to impose a huge cost on your target and coerce them into doing things which they don't want to do. So I, I, my suggestion would be, there should be a change in this literature, where the, there should be a stoppage of the word jihadist when it comes to non-state actors.
Thank you. The gentleman close to you has a very final question.
Thank you very much, Chair. Antoine Leveque from the double I, double S in London. My question is for Adil Sultan, but also for others on the panel. Adil, you referred to this concept of CCBRN, introducing a cyber element. I wonder, because this conversation is about non-state actors, whether your assertion of cyber was based on a particular threat assessment of non-state actors in relation to the cyber domain? Thank you.
Thank you. I think we had a lot of food for thought. We start with you, Paula Van Inen, and I ask each of you to be very brief, because in about five minutes, we should close. So just pick maybe the most salient questions you heard and, and comment it.
Thank you. I, I think that we didn't talk very much about the international collaboration, it was asked. And I think at least OPCW has that kind of system, that all the national authorities can inform what type of equipment and tools they have for assistance and protection for other countries. So I, I think this is something what the nations should consider more critically. And also OPCW have now introduced new mechanism, which is called RAM, it's something Rapid Response Monitoring Unit, which means that any other country who needs any help, advice, can ask for that from the OPCW. And I know that there are many other issues where international collaboration is done with assistance and protection. Thank you.
Okay. So, so many issue, there's, it's, it's, so many issues, it's quite difficult to pick which one to choose. The key that we have mentioned several times is security culture, and that is based on secure, in, in, on an awareness that there might be a threat to, to certain materials or facilities or processes. So security awareness really is key, and I will not address that in much detail, but in order to get a connection to 1540, there is a key role also to play for non-government experts and for academics and professional societies. 1540 and the follow-up resolution, 1977, are very good in that they explicitly called for the involvement of the civil society, including outside expertise, and, and this is something where we can really, where we should be working with. Now, in terms of complexity, sharing international collaborations, and that's really too difficult to answer in a minute or so, but I, you know, one of the things that I, that I would propose to address as, as a small thing, that is nevertheless very expensive, to, to, to address the, the, the problem of radioactive materials in areas of conflicts, is to bolster, bolster our border controls with technology, with new technology. I've always been a bit critical about that, because in the nuclear field, they're not very effective terribly, comes to uranium, for instance, but for radioactive materials, they can play a bigger role. Now, a big problem in that regard, of course, is that you have to train the border control officers to be very vigilant and to really know what. So there's a lot of, so security culture has a lot of facets and a lot of different audiences. You have border control officers who need to be trained differently, from nuclear facilities operators, from, from hospital workers, and so, so it's a, it's really a big issue. And, and finally, this, this Osama bin Laden state, I'm, a statement from 1999, I looked that up again, I read that actually very carefully. And it's, it's funny in a way, because it's really a statement of deterrents, right? We want to have such materials so that others can't do us harm. So, so it's not a proactive statement, but, but rather one where, where, you know, very simplified, he thinks in terms of deterrents. And it's quite, now, the actions that his organization had conducted according to what intelligence agencies have published in the meantime, speak a slightly different language, and I cannot go into that. But I just would like to point out that he's not the only terrorist that, that thinks about nuclear capabilities in terms of deterrents. Interestingly, there are others, including the just-deceased German former terrorist from the 1970s, who was interviewed in the late 1970s, and people were asking him, "How would you like a nuclear weapon?" He said, "Yeah, because that's a good way to, to, to blackmail politicians into doing this and that." That is Bomby Bauman, the former, former. So, so he was one of the few terrorists who actually taught, talked in public about nuclear terrorism at the time. So, so you compare different types of nuclear terrorists who want to be terrorists, how they think, it's quite interesting. But I can't go into that at this point. Final question that I had, how can I, what shall I use to distinguish terrorists, and what word should I use to distinguish terrorists who refer to their particular religion as a justification for their cause, as opposed to anarchists or other, so jihadist is not something you want to, to be seen, so how, what other.
No, but for analytical purposes, you have to make distinctions between different types and groups of terrorists, so which. So, so there is a book by William Porter, Four Ways of Terrorism. That has made categorization of terrorists. So acupuncturists and terrorists that we're talking about, enthusiasts in these kind of areas, they fall in the accurate category.
This, this discussion goes a little bit beyond the scope of this conference, which is by the end, a non-believation and disarmament conference, another terrorism study conference, but feel free to continue this discussion in the coffee break. Sarah and Dr. Sultan still have the final words.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief and address the question of the 1540 vis-à-vis other international instruments such as Chemical Weapons Convention or Biological Weapons Convention. From the legal point of view, as like a lawyer looking at the convention, that there isn't, theoretically speaking, any sort of priority, that Chemical Weapons Convention gets priority over the 1540, there isn't like, in terms of source of the law, they all are binding. The question would become more practical, and the question would become how countries or a respective country want to frame or position itself. And the reason I say, because Chemical Weapons Convention and all the Arms Control Convention have been multilaterally negotiated, so there is this question of consent versus 1540 has been through the Security Council Resolution, and 15 countries voted for it. So there is always this backlash, "Oh, I didn't really vote for it, and I didn't really have a say in it." So from the practical point of view, that could, could be an issue. But as a lawyer, looking at a source, there, there is, and actually, the 1540 resolution has recognized that some countries have already made other legally binding obligations, so it made sure that there isn't contradiction. In terms of the, like, forward-looking agenda and looking for the science and technology, the good news about 1540 is pretty flexible, so it's, it, the question would become what the committee would decide to make it as a priority, and they have already recognized the importance of science and technology. And this also ties back to Alice's comments about the future of 1540. So depending what kind of future it might have, it might want to have some sort of technologist, scientist on the board, or has some sort of cooperation or dialogue with the science community.
Thank you, Dr. Shirazian. And Dr. Sultan, you have the final word.
Thank you. So I have the final word, I can say whatever I feel like. Thank you. Thank you for all the comments, first addressing the question by Antoine. This cyber, this is probably a more, more serious challenge than even CBRN.
This cyber, this is probably a more serious challenge than even CBRN, because once you talk about CBRN, the material and facilities are on the geographical proximity of any state. In terms of cyber, the non-state actors can do or create a situation while sitting in a different geographical location, targeting different country, so there would be a problem. You can't hold probably a country responsible for that, but in the CBRN, at least, once you say it's a national responsibility, you can hold states accountable for their actions or lack of actions which led to a state of that incident. But in cyber, that's a problem. So since it's a new field, and we are still into it, there is GGE working in the United Nations also, they are developing these thoughts about this, but as I see, it's more problematic than what we are generally used to of listening to CBRN. So this is one. On nuclear terrorism, I agree with comments by my colleague, friend sitting in the front row, that we as analysts, at least, because we are not from the profession of journalism, which thrives on creative alarmism, that anything that bleeds, it must, it sells, and anything that doesn't bleed, it must not lead, means the headline is possibility of a nuclear terrorism by non-state actors or certain group. That sells, that's why we continue to follow those news. But as analysts, I think we need to be very, very clear, and I'm sure most of the people over here, once we talk about nuclear terrorism, is it a possibility that a non-state actor can get access to a nuclear weapon and might actually use it? I say it's quite impossible. You cannot completely rule out, but even if a non-state actors get access to a nuclear weapon, can he use that? Because all the nuclear weapon states, they have standard protocols. These nuclear weapons are not like a normal bomb that anybody can get hold of it and they can use it. So we have to understand, while we continue to use the threat of nuclear terrorism, yes, non-state actors can get access to nuclear material, probably they can use it for dirty bomb, and they can use for radiological dispersal devices. That's a more likely scenario for which we should be preparing. But we, most of the time, the debate gets focused on nuclear terrorism and the possibility of suitcase bombs or the terrorists getting those bombs and using against other states. That, I'm not saying that's completely impossible, but I think the more likely scenario is the RDD or the dirty bomb scenario. There was a comment about resolution versus treaties. I think as we see the nature of international relations, the, how it is structured, the international community, states are sovereign entities. You don't expect that somebody would start pushing the states and states would agree to those. But if you want states to collaborate or cooperate at the international level, you have to resort to a principle of inclusiveness, voluntarism, and the NSS was one example, in which you were able to draw so many conclusions, or you were able to draw consensus, communicate outcome documents, because you were not pushing the states. So that's the problem. What is happening is that the few states, they decide that this is a threat and we need to develop something, and then they start demanding from the other states. So that's why our treaties or the other arrangements, that's what, they're not working. I think NSS was one example, and if the international community seriously want to address this threat, probably that's an example that we should be looking towards that. I think only one question was asked, and the rest of the words were the last words, so thank you. Thank you very much.
The very last word is from the chair, who would like to thank the panelists for their very interesting presentations and food for thought, and please give them a warmer pulse.